Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town of Dewey Beach Town Council Monthly Meeting. It's being held at Dewey Beach Life Saving Station as well as via Zoom. It's February 16th, 2023, and it's 3:00. With that, I'm going to convene the Town Council meeting. Start with the opening ceremonies of the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the name of the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of this law, the Constitution, and the Constitution.
Thank you, everyone. Quick roll call. Commissioner Bauer.
President.
Commissioner Givens.
Here.
Commissioner Zosinski.
Here.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
And Mayor Bill Stevens is also here. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
No. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town manager update. This is over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Jim and I continue to work with Deldot on the public safety. We're going to hear from them today. And also Senator the Inland Bays, and we'll hear from Bob and Matt today. The RFP for the beach rake is completed. When I say that, I'll be coming back in March 15th with a recommendation to the commissioners. And I also have that vendor here to answer any questions. The RFPs for the landscaping, which is basically the Center Island, Baird Avenue, and King Charles. Those interviews are going to take place next Tuesday, the 20th. And there's three vendors that I'll be talking to about that RFP. Hopefully, we can get the RFP for the banks that we put out. I think we got eight of those back. We're going to be reviewing those next week. Sheen and I will. And then the following week, we'll meet with the mayor to kind of go over those. And by March 15th, we'll also be presenting. So all three RFPs, the beach rake, landscaping, and for the banks, will all be on the March 15th meeting. I'll have the chief talk a little bit about the EV charger station that we're going to be, that she was able to get through a grant. A million dollars. We're still in the pipe for a million dollars for the end of Reed Street with the Army Corps of Engineers. The mayor received a letter. I received a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers. I checked with Senator Kuhn's office. They said at this point, there is nothing else we need to do to continue with that million-dollar grant that we're looking at from the Army Corps of Engineers. The $2.3 million grant we put in to help with the police station for the new town hall and police station, I'm going to have to reapply for that. That did not get through the senator's office. It was kicked back. It wasn't because of anything we did. It was just they didn't feel that it did meet the requirements in the area that we put it in. So I will be reapplying for that $2.3 million for the new police station. Deldot will be looking at the streets from Collins to Cullen Street for new paving. That's going to start sometime in March. And what they plan on doing is doing half a street at a time. So let's look at Daggersworthy Street out here. They'll try to do half of the street, mill it, pave it, and then do the other half, mill it, pave it, so they don't have to close the complete street. So we'll see. I met and talked with the contractor, which is Alan Meyer, today that's going to be doing the work. And they plan on starting in the south end and working their way north. And again, starting in March, sometime depending on the weather. Kate, you could bring up the photos of the flooding on Jersey Street for me? So we've had continuing issues on Jersey Street. I received probably five or six emails and at least one letter about some flooding down on Jersey Street on the first block and on the second block. We brought it up at the Infrastructure Committee meeting. This past week, Jim Deedee's and I met with Remington and Burnick on Tuesday to talk about possible solutions for this flooding. You see it up there on the screen, how to address that. And also then on Wednesday, met with Harry Caswell to get his opinion and his options. So I hope by the March 15th meeting or so, I have the information back on how much it's going to cost, some estimates to address the flooding, not only in the first block of Jersey Street, but also in the second block of Jersey Street. And then both those streets definitely need to be repaved once the work is completed on Jersey Street, first block and second block.
Is there any chance of getting that done before the asphalt?
No.
Okay.
There's really, there's not. Evaluating Carolina and Chesapeake Street. Jim Deedee's and I did. We had Remington and Burnick look at it and Harry Caswell look at it. Both of the construction firms say the streets are in pretty good shape. Carolina and Chesapeake are in good shape. They would not recommend getting those two streets repaid, with the exception of the 10 feet where it connects into King Charles. So as you come down the blocks and where it connects with King Charles, we do need to do some work there. The streets overall are an acceptable condition from both Remington and Burnick and from Harry Caswell's evaluation. RV will start work at the end of the month on Reed Avenue for the putting in the flaps. We are 90% on the town hall and police station EMS. When I say at 90%, the design of the building is basically done. We are waiting for Fire Marshal's Office, Deldot, and Water Conservation to come back and give us the, saying your permits are good. Water Conservation, we reviewed, Jim and I did. We turned that back in. It's at Water Conservation right now. Deldot and the Fire Marshal will start waiting for those to come back. We hope to have 100% by April, and the bids go out May 15. Then we want the bids back by June 15. And then I'd like to have it presented to the commissioners on June 21st. If it's not enough time, then we'll be looking at July 19th. But whatever contractor is picked, we'll bring that bid to the commissioners. So you have, you see it, you see how much, and you know, you can ask questions. And we'll have Dave Naples here and GMV to answer those questions. Construction is planned to start September 15th. Alder and Kelly Pettyjohn will be departing us. She is, she's taking another position that will enhance her career as she moves on. I'd like to thank her for her fine work and teamwork with the Town of Dewey Beach. She is going to be meth. She was very easy to work with. Police station clerk with the town. As you know, our town hall is very small. So her office is right outside of my office or her chamber. So everybody that comes in for a trial or for anything, they walk right by my office and go into the small, her small office chamber for the trials. And I see the people coming in and out all the time in there. But thank you, Kelly, for all your work. And if we could bring up those other photos real quick, Kate? So the end of the streets, West Street. The McCoys do a really good job and the other folks that live on West Street taking care of that street. And I just show these photos. So if there's anybody else that's interested in some work, the town is happy to work with you to try to improve the end of the street. That's West Street. If you go to the next photo, Kate? You see how they've done it? It looks, it looks really nice. So I would ask that you don't do the work unless you come to the town. We'll work with you. And you know, if you need, we can work something out where the town, we take a donation from you, like we did on Bellevue Street. We took a donation from the folks there. We did that work down there on Bellevue Street. So there's example of two streets, West Street and Bellevue Street. If the folks really want to get the end of the street looking pretty good, more than happy to work with them on it for those two, any streets really.
Those like, the bike is around $5,000 for?
So Bellevue Street was around $5,000. Those were the six-by-sixes, putting in the stones, the bike rack, everything you see down there. Most of it was the six-by-sixes in the labor to put that, put that in there. If anybody's interested, please have them contact me. And then I'd like to just thank everybody on our team. They continue to do a great job. Everybody from the police department to maintenance, to our front office, building officials, Rover, 600 building permits so far this year. Everybody's doing a great job. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Depending on any questions, that's all I have.
Have any questions, council?
No.
Thank you. Chief?
Just a few things. Our recruits will be graduating on March 1st in Dover.
David's here already.
So we'll have our two recruits joining us, which will really help our manpower. That'll take us up to 11. And March 2nd, we'll be doing their swearing-in ceremony and celebration. We've already offered nine seasonal positions for officers. I believe it's five returners and four new. So I'm looking for three more spots. So we're only going to hire 12. We've already got nine lined up. So we're doing pretty well on that. We are working on our St. Patty's Day plan for deployment for that weekend. That's a big weekend for us. And we have a lot of things going on. So we are reaching out to some of our outside agencies. They're going to come in and help us. Fire Marshals is probably going to send some officers into town and so is Date to help us out, as well as Ocean View and Milton. So we're working on that plan. We have reached out to Apple Electric to get the EV charging station plan going. The vehicles are supposed to be delivered hopefully by the end of March. They'll get marked and everything. So hopefully, they'll be ready to go by April. And the plan is to have the charging stations in the ground and ready to go so we can start using those trucks right away. And my plan is if they're offering this grant again next year, we'll reapply to get some more vehicles through this grant. So your fully electric vehicles and the installation, the charging stations, and the trucks were all paid for by this grant.
That's great.
So we're not paying a dime for them.
Excellent.
Other than that, everything's going well. We're still working on updating everything at the station, working on procedures and policies and everything that we can to make things better. And everybody's doing a great job.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for the chief? All right.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Bauer.
All right. Well, budget finance, we're going to talk about that today. So that looks like that's, you know, your work is completed unless we take something back to them. And then the marketing committee has Dewey and Bloom that they're going to talk about today. So we've got some good ideas going on there. And we want to start some fundraising for town hall, too. So I'm going to get that project rolling.
Wonderful. Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, we have reformed the Climate Change Committee. We're going to talk about that a little later on the agenda and approve the new chair and the members for that committee. Charter and Code Review Committee will meet on February 21st at 4:00. It's going to be a little bit compressed because there's, I think, a Board of Adjustment meeting. It's 6:00. So I think we'll still be able to get a fair amount of work done at that meeting. But that's the next scheduled meeting for that group. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Givens?
Investment Committee met on February 8th. We had a guest in attendance, Eric Nelson, who will be asked to join the committee at our next meeting. We didn't have enough time to get his credentials in. Our chair, Brian, is resigning because of business commitment. So we are going to need yet another person and somebody to serve as chair. So either another person or somebody on the committee to serve as chair. The fixed income, flexible equity, and global have been meeting benchmarks while US small cap and emerging are trailing a little bit. The full presentation is on the website. And I would encourage people to look at that because it's pages and pages. And I don't want to repeat it here. AI is driving much of the market's overall success. And the focus is going to be on active quality stock picks. But the unique challenge is the high level of government debt. We still have the ongoing question is whether the general fund should be subject to any risk. And the committee is waiting for advisement from council on that matter.
Okay. Very good. Commissioner Zosinski.
Yeah, the Infrastructure Committee met. As Mr. Zolper pointed out, there was a lot of discussion around the north end. And the paving is not going to be done because Mr. Zolper and the committee really want to, or at least immediately, it's not going to be done because really want to address the flooding issues specifically on Jersey Street. And you know, this is different than the bayside flooding we have. This is mostly rainwater, lack of grade, and lack of permeable surface kind of all kind of combining to create kind of a problem where, for lack of a better word, we have kind of like shallow areas where there's just no runoff. And so that's really what Mr. Zolper's having the consultants come in to talk about is what are the feasible solutions? One resident called in who has a neat type of drain that they put on their property, their own lot. But the problems aren't just really with the streets. The problems are also kind of a combination of lack of permeable surface and homes being built with less permeable, all that kind of stuff kind of coming and making the situation worse. But there was really nothing referred directly back at this point.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I'll remind council a favor, and that is to get with Kate and as we head into the 24-25 season, to schedule new meetings now so that we don't have an issue doubling up and the frequency to which you need to happen. Next thing, can I have a motion for the approval of the January 19th minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any conversation? Not hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
I will open this up for any public comment for a non-agenda item. If anyone's here that would like to make any non-agenda items. Sir, state your name, rank, address.
Jim Deegan, since this isn't on the agenda, I'd like to speak about the beach replenishment fund. Much like a homeowner who needs to get a car in four years or you're trying to buy a new house with a recent DNRC proposal that they're going to run out of money. I think the Town Council needs to really look at how we can build up that beach replenishment fund to meet the needs of a possible buy-in or sharing with the county to replenish the beach. I was disappointed when I went to the Investment Committee and they did not want to tackle on the investment options to try to increase that fee, even though it says in our charter that they had that responsibility. I would hope that the new Investment Committee person would seek out alternative ways to raise that fund so that we can meet the demands of what may be coming. That's my comment.
Thanks, sir. I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll just, I don't usually do follow-up on things. But what Jim's referring to is Denrec has recently engaged in a work group, work study to find a way about how to do cost sharing and how to possibly take it from the state's portion and make it part of the municipality needs to also participate. It's not anywhere like, it's not close to being put in place, but they're having that conversation because their more funds are being directed to the Bay Beaches and they just don't have enough resources. So I think that's it, sir. All right. First item on the agenda, presentation by Deldot regarding public safety infrastructure upgrades. Gentlemen? And thank you for everything you do for the town.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for having me. Kyle Clevenger. I work for Whitman Record and Associates, consultant for Deldot. And I have Peter Haig with me here. He's the chief of traffic engineering for Deldot. So Peter and I have been working kind of hand in hand on this project. Yes, there's been a lot going on in town over the last five years. I think it's my third time here presenting to you guys. So what we have is more funding for the town. And we took, well, I guess I'll get into that in a second. But what we're doing is we're implementing improvements that were identified in an ADA assessment that was completed back in 2019. A lot of those improvements were made through that pave and rehab project with the curb bump outs and the RFP flashers back in 2020. And then we followed up with the median barrier project from Salisbury to Reed Avenue. So what we have is additional funding. And instead of a traditional capital project where it'd take years and years of design with federal funding, we're going through Deldot Traffic's program. So we're able to basically utilize on-call, we have three on-call traffic contractors. We're able to put the job out in a much, much more fast-tracked approach. So we're taking a two-phase approach with this project. And we're working on phase one right now. Phase one is essentially no utility relocations, no right-of-way impacts. We're kind of working within the existing right-of-way. So our main scope items are extension of the post and median barrier throughout the rest of town limits. That's from Collins Street to Reed on the south end and then Salisbury up to Clayton, King Charles Avenue area. We have construction of additional curb bump outs, reconstruction of driveways for ADA compliance, and minor signing, striping, and RFP modifications. But really, the goal of this project is ADA compliance throughout town limits, part of the town's comprehensive plan. And again, part of the study that kicked everything off. So our schedule for the phase one project, we're hoping to get this out this winter, next spring. So approximately a year from now. Phase two, we do not have a schedule or any timeline on that yet. We haven't started design. So what we're doing is trying to get as much knocked off in the phase one project, really tackle hopefully 80-plus percent of what we need to do. And then the phase two project's going to come behind with a potential right-of-way, like easements, utility relocations, whatever we need just to get the final ADA compliance in place. So again, median pedestrian barrier and landscaping. I know you guys are all familiar with what's out there now. So we're going to extend that. We've been working with Bill to select some plantings that have done well the first time around. And we'll also be doing some gateway improvements at the two entrances into town. Now on the next slide, we have the curb bump outs. Again, you guys are familiar with these. So we weren't able to hit all the intersections through the pave and rehab. So we're coming back and essentially knocking out the rest of them. I think there was a few corners that were leaving in place for certain reasons. But as you guys have seen throughout town, they've reduced pedestrian crossing distances. They promote traffic calming. It's one of the biggest tools in the, or one of the oldest tools in the bag for traffic calming. You know, they've reduced the speed of turns, kind of narrows the feel of the roadway. So we're going to continue with that, especially given the high pedestrian presence here in Dewey Beach. And they just provide more safe, general, comfortable feel for pedestrians. And then the driveway entrance and reconstruction. So what we're going to do is flatten the driveways. As you can tell from this typical section here in the bottom left, the existing is what you have in town a lot where the sidewalk's sloped at a driveway. And for a wheelchair or somebody using a mobility device, you're kind of on that tilt. And it needs to be 2% pretty much flat for ADA compliance. And then you'll also see, here's an example up top. You can see how the curbs kind of come down really sharp. The curb tapers to the curb cut. That can be a tripping hazard. So what we'll be doing is flattening out the ramps down to the driveways and then taking that, the back hinge of that sidewalk and dropping it. So that's flat. In a lot of cases in the town, the right-of-way line is essentially the back of the sidewalk. So in order to drop that grade, we're going to have to go onto private property to reconstruct a small portion of these driveways. So that's what that, this graphic's showing. And then if you hit the next slide, we'll be doing that via the right-to-enter process, which you can check in the Delaware code. But it essentially gives Deldot authority to reconstruct public facilities that are on, that may encroach on private property. But if they're paid to the public's expense, they can go in and modify it for, in this example, for ADA compliance. There's no change to the footprint of the sidewalk. We're not able to like widen the sidewalk, go into anybody's property. There'd be no changes to, you know, no right-of-way takes, no easements, and no monetary exchange. So letters will be sent out to the affected homeowners along, or property owners along the corridor, whoever has curb cuts essentially. My contact information will be given out. You guys can contact me if you have any questions. And we can go over the, you know, owner by owner. We can discuss the impacts. And then finally, we have our plan. This is on the website, correct, Bill? I believe you guys have it up there.
We will. We'll have it posted after this, along with the letter that you're going to provide to the property owners.
Yes.
And we're going to do it under a spotlight, like we have for Wind Farms and some of the other things.
Okay. So yeah, I just suggest looking online once you guys get a chance and it's posted up there. But the blue shows you the proposed improvements. Essentially, again, driveways is a big thing. The green underneath the driveways is where we are maintaining an existing depressed curb. And the red is where we'd be taking a depressed curb and removing it and installing full height curb. So most of the driveways will be maintained. A lot of them are landlocked to Route 1 where you have to maintain that access. So if your property happens to be one of the ones on there, you'll be getting a letter from me. And any questions, feel free to call. But again, you can see it's just bump outs, redoing the striping at the crosswalks, driveway reconstruction, and the new barrier. The green is the barrier that's there. And then the blue, going north to Salisbury to Clayton.
What's going to be your plan when you, when you have sidewalks and have the telephone pole right in the middle? And I realize it's down the road, but are you going to bump out the sidewalks or try to gas the residents or try to move the pole in?
So we have two, I think, three or four locations. And two of them on the plan, you'll see, we're going to widen the sidewalk into the roadway. There are areas that aren't loading zones now. So we're still going to maintain at least a five, six-foot bike lane at minimum. But you're going to be able to come into the roadway enough to have full, you know, the full width around the pole. I think there's one or two where we aren't able to do that just because of nearby driveways and loading zones and such. So we'll have to get, that'll be a phase two project where we may have to look into an easement to, you know, hopefully put the, widen the sidewalk around the pole, push into the property a little bit.
Great.
Yes. That's the project in a nutshell. I'd also just want to disclaim that the role plan available online with the improvements, that's just conceptual for right now. We haven't nailed down exactly what we're doing. But it should be nailed down soon. As you know, we're looking to start construction about a year from now. So my information's there. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right. Number two, presentation by Center for the Inland Bays regarding the Sunset Park project.
Hello there. Good afternoon. I'm Bob Collins from the Delaware Center for the Inland Bays. I am the manager of programs and facilities. Among the other duties that I work on are living shoreline projects. I've installed seven, or this is the seventh one I've worked on. And next one. Yeah, today I'm going to fill you in on the sunset, the work on the Sunset Park living shoreline, existing conditions, proposed solution. I'll touch on cost and funding issues and discuss the project timeline. Okay, I think everybody knows where Sunset Park is. It's right down the other end of the street here. You know, this is one of the existing conditions that we'll see out there, flooding. And this is right next, you can kind of see it. I think you can see it pretty well within the shadow of where it floods up on there. Flooding in the inland bays is typically caused by weather events and exacerbated by sea level rise and land subsidence. We see that storms are more intense. They hold more water vapor. Winds are stronger. Next one. You know. You know, I think we, did we miss one in there? Yeah, okay, this one here. You know, it's not just floods, storms that cause flooding. This is from February 6th. And this is classic sunny day flooding. And it, you know, it approached three feet. You know, and this was without a rain event or intense storm nearby. So next one. We also get erosion out on, you know, on the lands here. You know, this is, this is at Sunset Park. It, you know, not only causes property damage upland, but it also washes sediment into the water and thus can add excess nitrogen and phosphorus, which degrades water quality. So next one. You know, our problems again are flooding, tidal, stormwater, sunny day, and erosion. So next one. And I'm going to show a couple of slides. Okay, and living shorelines, what they are. In their simplest form, they're shorelines where you use nat- natural or nature-based tactics to address flooding. The center has a 13-year history with living shorelines. And we've used a number of innovative methods to protect the shorelines and allow for natural ways to stabilize the shore. So I'm going to show a couple of slides of the 30% plan along with 30% planned estimated cost. I did just earlier today, earlier, really late morning, I got the 60% plans in, or 60% cost estimate in. Haven't had a chance to look at them, but I'll talk about that in a minute. But looking at the plans here, this is the top section there. And it features a dune that runs down the middle that will actually be a sand dune. And you can see this blue area there is, will be backed with HESCO barriers. The outer line of it, of the project, yep, thank you. The outer line, the purple up there is, is an array of oyster shell bags that are produced through our Don't Chuck Your Shucks program. And in between that, we'll see filled with sand and planting of mainly Spartina albiniflora. Yeah, this is the middle section there. You can see it. But it goes all the way out to, to the corner there of North Beach, at which point we'll have an array of what we call WODs. And that stands for wave attenuation device. And they're basically a concrete structure made out of, in a pyramid form. The holes in the middle are designed so that when a wave hits, hits that structure, it doesn't just reflect the energy off, it absorbs the energy. Thus calming, you know, calming down the water. You know, what, what'll happen on these things, you know, is that there will be some wave energy that goes through, but not enough to keep battering the land that's behind it. You know, living shorelines, they don't reduce the height of the storm surge or stop the waves from coming shore, but they do absorb the energy. Even, even if we get flooded, again, no battering. Next one. We'll also be looking at the Lions Club marsh. We'll look to repair any existing drainage that's in there. We look to repair the plunge pools and the channel that runs through the middle. And what that'll do is, you know, it'll, it'll help, it'll accept the stormwater from McKinley Ave and will maintain the channel so that the water flows into the bay. There at the end, we'll do more or less a traditional living shoreline project to maintain the edge of the marsh there. Some of the techniques that we're going to use out there, we'll include, we'll go to the next one. These are pictures from Angola by the Bay project that we just, that we completed last year. We'll use green timber and coral logs. It's on the left and the right. You can see where we put it together to create the edge of a marsh. So it'll maintain the edge, but also as, as water gets over the top, it'll dissipate the energy and any sediment in the water will, should fall out and accrete in the marsh. Excuse me. Next one. And this is from Reed Ave. Some of the other things that we'll use, again, the HESCO barriers are in the middle there on the left. And what those do, they really, they make a spine toward the dune. You can actually even use it somewhat as a wall as we've done out there on Reed Avenue. Other materials that we use there are shell bags there on the right. Again, we manufacture those at the, with our Don't Chuck Your Shucks program. Next. And then in other areas, we'll put sand and planting. The planting's a big part of it. Also in this picture, I also wanted to point out in the top center, excuse me, is, is an array of shell bags. And again, that, that dissipates energy as the, as the waves come ashore. All right, so of course, the discussion of dollars and cents. You know, the 30% cost estimate that we have on this is 700,000. Again, we saw a, the 60% cost estimate come in today. Again, I haven't had a chance to really get into it, but it does appear to be about 680 and that includes a 20% contingency. To date, we've raised, I believe it's 400, or we have commitments for 425,000. Yeah, so, you know, the shortfall right now, well, it'd be less than that now. So we need to bridge that funding gap. So the next one. So the next steps, again, we have to raise that, raise a certain amount of money or scale back or phase the project. You know, the, the center has gone through its usual suspects of funding sources. For instance, the community water quality improvement grants. And so we will be looking to the town to find a way to, to get some of those funds that are available, various sources. Bill and I have discussed it. And assuming we, when we acquire the funding or we're sure, we're relatively sure we'll get it, we can issue the, we can submit for the permitting, require state permit and federal authorization. And the fed, federal authorization will include the, the typical sub authorizations. And all goes well. State permitting particularly is painfully slow at this point. That we look, we look to do implementation in fall of 2025. I will note that there is a time of year restriction where we can't do in-water activities and that typically is from March 1st through into September sometime. So with that, I'll address any questions that we have on this.
Ah, thank you very much.
Yeah, a quick question. Maybe I just missed this, but I'm not sure what you mean by 30% cost estimates and 60% cost estimates.
It's just where we are on the planning stage here. So we've done, you know, concept, 30% is mostly a concept. 60% is really dials down the project.
So the cost, 60% through the process here, the cost has actually come down a little bit?
It has, yeah.
Okay.
And that's not unusual.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I have just, just some comments. First, thank Kyle and Peter for your presentation and Bob for yours. So when we, if the town should decide to donate some money, whether it's through infrastructure or whatever it is, think about what we're doing. So there's the flooding at the end of Dagworthy Street as you just saw, right? We will be addressing that. They're putting in a berm, a dune and a kayak launch there. That'll help that water or keep that water from coming to Dagworthy. Also down on McKinley Street, they're looking at those two run-ins that just water hits that, they fill up and they go down Hayden, but then they go down to Reed Street and they go down that way, right? So what we're trying to do is channel that water on McKinley Street to go out, not to flood the marsh area on McKinley Street, right? And even so, Bob is looking at putting some type of small like barrier between the property owners where Mr. Deegan is and Ms. Tar, that will help also funnel that water out into the bay. When it does that, it'll help filter it. So we're, we're really addressing it. So if we come to the infrastructure committee and ask for a certain amount of money, we are really addressing two flooding issues, one on Dagworthy Street and one on McKinley Street at a pretty good cost savings considering how much money we spent on just Reed Street alone in the three years that I've been here. So I just ask that the commissioners keep that in mind.
Good point. All right.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Number three, review the, oh, you guys can't leave.
Hey, what's your answer?
Number three, review the January 2024 financials. Sheena, please come on up and give your overview.
State your name, where you're from.
Things are coming, accommodations tax. I want to thank whoever's buying property in this town because we have met our budget for the share on accommodation, I mean, transfer tax. Accommodations tax actually met the original budget. It was like, everybody went to sleep for a month and then boom, everything came in. Yeah. And that goes for our front office calling people and just saying, hey, did you forget about us? It's been really great. Everybody's been working to make sure we get these numbers. I'm looking at the numbers, we're, we're going to have a little bit of excess after the set aside, the allocations. So.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Sheena.
Great.
In terms of meeting the budget, did we hit the original budget figure or the amended budget figure?
The original.
For accommodations.
For accommodations.
For accommodations, the original before the amendment. And I'll just say anything that we have extra really needs to go into the general fund for the new town hall. That's, we really need to make sure that we're, you know, if we do have extra money at the end of this year, that that's where it's going.
Okay. We have to meet some other obligations.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd assume that once we get through the, we'll get, we're going to get through the budget process. And then what we're also going to look is when we get to the end of March, how we do, remember with last year, Gary, we looked at allocations and how we, what is, if there's any deficiencies in the funds, how we get it chewed up, streets and infrastructures, et cetera. And then see what excess we can put in. But it looks great.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sheena.
Do you have any questions about the next couple that you need me?
So I'd also remind the mayor that we do have our accountant on for Fall Cast and also Allison on there in case there's any questions.
All right. Number four on the agenda is to discuss a possibly vote on the ordinance to amend 117-13 license fees of the code to increase license fees as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. If you look at the ordinance that had been drafted, this includes increases to a lot of various areas of residential property rentals and the bedroom fees, motel and hotel fees, food and beverage establishment fees, et cetera. So these are all elements that we've discussed before. And part of the reason why they're put here in the agenda is because the budget that we'll be discussing in item seven, item seven, assumes that these things are passed to, or are going to go through. So with that, any questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, these came from Budget and Finance Committee through a workshop where they are here today.
Okay. I think we've all been through it enough.
Any public comment?
Any public comments? Great, thanks, Gary. None? Then may I, can I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve these, these fees. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, on to the next. Number five, discuss a possible vote in ordinance to amend 113 violations penalty of the code to increase parking violation fees as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. The comment here is that it's going from $30 to $45 for failure for various parking elements with the potential increase in parking up to $30 a day. For example, it would be, it's a kind of a crap shoot of whether you want to pay for it or not pay for it. So it's trying to put a little bit more into the penalty side so people actually will pay for the parking versus not pay for the parking. Any questions concerning this ordinance? Let's see, any public comment? Can I have a motion to approve?
Open comment.
You've had your three minutes.
This is in to Bill's op, or the parking code. As I walk through the town and see tickets on people that have their tires on the roadway, is there anything in our code that tells people that they need to park on the grass?
They are, they are to park on the right of way and not obstruct the roadway. Now they do, there's some areas that you just can't pull your car completely off. So we, we use the steer wheel. If, from the steer wheel to the passenger seat, if that part of the car is in the town parking area, off the town road, they're okay. If the steering wheel is out beyond that, then they will get a ticket.
Good question.
And could I add to that? I think for cars that are parked in a driveway, but the, the rear end of the car is extending beyond the property line and, and how far enough that it could possibly get a ticket, there's an exception for those circumstances as well. Unless they're actually blocking traffic, they're not going to get a ticket.
That's correct. They're in their driveway, they're allowed to park there.
But what you just described is not in the code.
I don't believe.
That's your interpretation.
Yeah, that's the way we, they can't block the roadway. And so we give them a little bit of leeway. So their passenger, or driver's side tires can be on the roadway, but not over where the steering wheel is. Because some of the roads are just, some of our streets, not our avenues, but our streets from basically Dagworthy North are very, very, you know, they're not very wide. They're 18 feet at best, whereas our avenues from McKinley South are sometimes 25 feet wide.
We don't have anything in writing that tells people how to minimize their chances of getting a parking ticket.
You know, Commissioner, I'll have to, before I 100% say yes, I'd like to go back and look at that and I'll get you an answer to that.
Yeah, but I think, I think what Jim is also referring to is when, on 4th of July, when the fireworks are going off, cars are just parked in the middle of the street.
Oh, I'm okay with that.
But you know, it's, it's not necessarily clear, you know, and I, and I get that. I mean, it's, I've had to explain to a few visitors what perpendicular means. So it's.
I'm running a bias.
It's not parallel, it's anyway. Kate, did you have a, somebody for comment while you're shaking your head?
No, I was just saying we do, do a parking brochure. Every year we update it to just put it kind of clear in lay terms, make sure all four tires are all right away. Sometimes parking brands, sometimes not parking brands. So we do put that information out to the public.
Just wanted to read by a seasonal pass or daily or weekly. Wonder if we could just hand out something. Yeah, they're right there. As soon as you come into town hall, we have all, from dogs, the rules on the dogs, parking, bonfires. The team's done a really good job having information ready to give out to the folks. And it's on our town website.
It's also on the webpage.
And then people got to read it.
So with that, then I have a motion.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? David, was that an aye?
Correct, it was, yes.
Number six, discuss a possible vote ordinance to amend 93-5 parking permits in 158-9 parking meters of the code to increase the parking permit and parking meter fee as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. Just as a brief overview, this is an increase from the seasonals from 250 to 300. I think we've determined that it's been 250 for quite some time.
250 since 2019, but the residential has been at 150 since 2012.
And the price will be reduced, it's 150 on August of each year. Residential permit goes from 150 to 175. Business owners from 2 to 225. Direct employees, 200 to 225. Weekly rate from 90 to 100. Daily rate from 25 to 30. Weekend rate from 45 to 55. And the hourly rate from 3 to 350. If anyone has read the wonderful Cape Gazette, we know that this is consistent with how other towns are also addressing some of their budgetary shortages. So open up to counsel for any comments.
Just a question for clarification. Under seasonal, seasonal is 300. And the price for seasonal will be reduced to 150 on August of each year. Just to, so basically if you're getting a short season, it's cheaper.
Right. Yeah, if you're not here the first few months, we won't charge you full price for a couple of weeks.
That being said, can I have a motion for this ordinance?
Still moved. Second.
All in favor? All right. Number seven, discuss a possibly vote to approve the fiscal year 2025 town budget. Yes, Ms. Hall, thank you for coming back to the podium. This, I will say, having been on council now for four years and part of the Budget Finance for seven, I think that's been the most mature process that we've had in terms of the in-depth of all the departments putting forth their wants and needs and the level of professionalism that you have indicated in prior years, Sheena, that you wanted us to move towards. And I think we will continue to do the move through process. I know all of council has reviewed the budget. I'll ask first of all, if there's anyone here that would like to speak about the budget? Is there anyone on Zoom, Kate? I'll open up for council for any questions for Sheena. Sir?
I have a couple of questions. And in the, in the discussion about the staff levels and positions in the various departments, the verb tense got a little unclear in some cases and I probably should have asked this earlier, but there are some new positions that are described. I think there's an extra dispatcher, police dispatcher. I think there's an administrative person in code enforcement or building official. I'm assuming those new positions are all in the budget numbers. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just made sure of that. The only other question I had is, is it any day requirement for FY '25? I'm assuming that it's 50% of the baseline expenditures of about $5.3 million.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? So we're talking about, have 2.65 million. Okay.
Don't have to increase the one to, at the end of the year.
That's, that's all I have.
Commissioner Jazinski?
Ms. Hall?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth?
Yes, sir.
Great job with your leadership on the budget. You know, we had the workshop before and you kind of really answered everything. And the narrative that you started putting together in previous years and continued this year really kind of just helps me and the public and everybody else just walk through the whole thing and really understand kind of what and why is happening. So I just wanted to thank you for the great job you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Best looking budget thing we've ever had.
Yes, Commissioner.
I had sent this in the email to Sheena and Bill and I just wanted to make sure that I was. that I was accurate. On page six of the narrative, when we talk about the year-round employee obligations, we were enhancing public safety by decreasing our officer response time, not increasing our officer's response time. Yes, ma'am. We were thinking, we were looking at it one way and it was not the normal way of looking at things. And we apologize for that. Just wanted to make sure we were not making the police slower. No. Thank you.
All right.
Motion to approve it?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a comment on this. So when I first got here, Commissioner Persinger kind of alluded to Rehoboth's budget being something that we should work towards. So Sheena and I have looked at Rehoboth's budget. We know Dewey and Rehoboth are different, but we are slowly working in that direction. I think over the next three to five years, you're going to see us get closer and closer with the narratives and how we show the products that we're actually going to be purchasing and why. But right now, the system we have set up, we meet with the department heads in August and they know that we need to find out how much money they need. They come to us and then Sheena and I go back to the department heads and say, well, this is all good, but this, you know, we may have to wait. And we go back and forth and back and forth. And then Wednesday, next Wednesday, we will have another meeting with the department heads now that this has been approved. And we're going to talk about their burn rates, their overburn and their underburn to make sure as we go through the year quarterly, we can say to the police chief, hey, you're overburning in your training, but you underburned in your summer officer's salary. So then if the chief says, well, I need to do the training, we have this underburn in the salary, we will move that money up. And then in the bigger pots where it's like maintenance and police salaries, we'll come for the commissioners and do a budget amendment to make sure that we're leveling the bubbles out.
Yeah, one of the things in this, this for the public, I mean, five years ago, four years ago, we were noticeably under everyone else's, we're the neighboring communities in terms of salaries, where we were at 75 or 80% in some places. And we've corrected that over the last few years so that we're at market in terms of in every position. So while there have been increases over the last few years, the increases were needed to bring the right people into the right seats, but we should see a relatively stable from, from this point forward.
Yes.
All right.
And without a property tax.
And without a property tax. That don't be on, not on my watch. All right. Number eight, discuss possible vote to approve the Dewey and Bloom project as recommended by the marketing committee. And we have the marketing chair here.
This is going to be the best presentation of the day.
Hello, everyone. I'm Alex Cedric. I'm the Dewey Beach Marketing Committee Chairperson, for those that don't know me. I'm here to recommend to the council the Dewey and Bloom beautification project. So this project is not only a beautification project in the sense that it is aimed to improve curb appeal, but also increase community engagement. So obviously psychologically, studies show that flowers improve mood, but also we are giving people the opportunity to literally and figuratively plant roots in this community, especially in the off-season. So with that in mind, I invite my committee member, Patrice Gancy, to give a presentation on the more detailed aspects of this project.
Alex, did you and Kate discuss what color to wear today? Good job.
Hi, I'm Patrice Gancy. I like that, plant roots. We didn't, us discuss that, that's a good line. We engaged in this research because a neighbor basically said, why can't Dewey do a in bloom project the way Rehoboth and Lewis do? Both of those projects are very different. Lewis is, has been around for years, very established, affiliated with the National America in Bloom project. I think they pay $1,100 a year to be members of that. They compete in competitions. There's a membership dues to be involved. And we thought, that's all fine, but maybe to get started, we should start a little bit smaller. And that's what Rehoboth does. It's a total volunteer committee. They started with 20 volunteers, they're now up to 75 with 103 planters planted around town. Volunteers come out once a week, they're assigned different planters to take responsibility for, they weed them, they plant them, they change them to pansies in the fall. And they do fundraising. This is not a cost to the town. The goal is to make it totally self-sufficient. That said, we thought you'd like to just get an idea of what the costs of a program would be, even if you don't have to pay for it. The biggest cost obviously is these planters. Rehoboth and Bloom recommended a company and a style that's a self-watering planter that uses.
This one right here, you see all over Rehoboth Avenue.
Yes, yeah. It's self-watering, it uses peat. I think there's an illustration there of how the water seeps up into the plant. I think it's a little bit above Kate, the other direction before the, there you are. We decided that rectangular works much better for our sidewalks and for pedestrian access. The planters do come already supplied with the initial peat so that you're just having to water and plant the plants. They aren't cheap, they're like $600 each list. The company offers some discounts for early ordering and bulk ordering and all of that, which I think if this project's approved, the committee would negotiate with them on We found much cheaper planters online. They're just all kinds, you go to Wayfair or Amazon, and the problem is you have to consider watering and whether the plants are going to die, the heat resistance, the size and the height. You don't want people either accidentally or deliberately knocking them over. So all of that has to be considered when we're making purchases. But again, I think there could be more research on other options that might work. In terms of other materials, plants, Rehoboth has Windsor's and Peppers, both donate plants at discounts. And often the people who volunteer to take responsibility for a planter will actually pay for the cost of the plants themselves, it's not a huge plant box. There's a possibility for people to sponsor the planters, and that goes back up to these little signs. Rehoboth orders cases of the stands that run about $165 for 25 stands. Then they work with arena signs locally to actually produce the signs. And those are only about $10 each, so that's not a big cost for those. You do have to consider water access. In Rehoboth, they try to locate the plants where businesses can help provide a water supply. The fire department helps in a couple of cases where they just can't reach them. And the, the project actually gives them a donation at the end of the year to compensate them a little bit for their, their service to the town and to the project. They also have a cart, they tell me, where they put 15 gallon tanks of water and roll them around to any of the plants that don't have access to some normal feed of water. In terms of placement, they do consult with the town, which I think they should do here as well, to make sure they're in places that are acceptable to the council and to the businesses so they're not running over anybody's pathways. And in terms of organization and donations, in Rehoboth at least, it's all volunteer. There is an administrative director who coordinates with team leaders. There are about 12 teams of 175 volunteers, and they coordinate every week going out and planting. In terms of finances, they do affiliate with Rehoboth Main Street. So that, they handle all the taxes and all the records and the donations and the 501(c)(3) responsibilities. And they said that's been tremendously helpful for that project, not to have to handle that separately. And I'm assuming there are a couple of organizations in town that we might call on to help with that as well. Just, other than answering your questions in more detail, I think that the project, if you all approve it, there's a lot more research to do. We can talk more to Lewis, we can look into more some companies that have other options for, for supplies. But basically, that's it. And I think the next step would be, if you approve it, that we have an organizational meeting. I think, Kate, we've already gotten about 20 forms, is that correct?
That sounds right.
We, we put the notice in the newsletter, we've gotten 20 submissions from individuals and couples who say they don't want to, not only want to plant, but they want to make donations. And I think that with that and with going out to local businesses, we probably could get a really good start. And that's it.
Any questions, council?
Question. It's 53 pounds empty, the planters that you've been looking at? So with dirt and such, it's going to weigh more? I don't want somebody to decide that they'd like to take it home for their mother or mother's day.
Right, exactly. Yes, exactly. Yes. Yeah, there is a whole other discussion.
Sure, someone's going to try.
There is a whole other discussion about what people find in the planters after a good weekend, but we won't go into that.
Okay, I just want the planters to still be there.
Let's not forget the two park benches went walking last year.
Not easily. I'd like to add to that a little bit. Part of the plan here is, you know, we have a number of HOAs communities. So what, I think individually, I'd like to reach out to all those with anybody's help that wants to do it as well. But the HOAs and the Dewey Business Partnership and, you know, I guess on sidewalks, what is it, 38 inches to be ADA compliant?
Yeah.
So, you know, if we could put on the sidewalk side of things, but we don't want to cut too much into the sidewalk, but I think it would, you know, the businesses would want to put obviously their planter in front of their establishment. But the areas, you know, that's where I think each street comes into play, especially as you go up on the north end, where the jolly trolley stop is, I mean, I think those are good locations. You know, we can mix in some of the round ones too, you know, the rectangular ones and do some round ones as well. But I, I figured at least 25 is, would be a good start. So we'll see how close we can get to that. I mean, that's, that's the goal at this point, and I think we have at least 25 HOAs in this town and businesses.
Just as a clarification, this is a discuss and possibly vote, but it's also a non-financially binding to the town, this is volunteers, donations.
Correct.
But I think the town would want to, they're the first one to buy one.
I'm sorry. What was that?
And I just would also like to add that Rehoboth and Bloom has been really very generous in talking to us about what they do and how they do it. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. They're having a fundraiser, their annual fundraiser on March 15th, and they asked if we could let people know about it and help sell some tickets, that would be nice too. But that's just a thank you to them for what they've done for us.
St. Patrick's Day coming, that would be a great time to meet people.
Any other questions with the marketing committee? All right, then can I have a motion?
Well, thank you, Patrice. You did an excellent job putting this together.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Number nine, discuss and prioritize the charter amendment recommendation suggested by the Charter and Code Review Committee. Again, there's a lengthy document from what they provided out on the internet. Gary, do you want to give a little bit of a overview?
Yeah, if the last presentation was the best and most enjoyable, this will be the driest, I can assure you. There, the genesis of this is, really began with the mayor. He took some time, went through the charter, identified some things that were inconsistent, raised some questions about it, some things perhaps where there was some duplicative provisions in a couple of sections of the charter. I took a look at it, we brought it back to the commissioners, the commissioners referred it to Charter and Code. And what we have now is a document that summarizes not only the issues that were raised, but also the recommendations that came back from the Charter and Code Review Committee. What I'd like to do is, first of all, is kind of segment these things into a couple of different categories. First, there are some that they didn't provide any recommendations on for a couple of reasons. And we can talk a little bit more about those and just, and talk a little bit about whether or not there's a sense of priority among the commissioners to pursue any of those. There are some where they've made some specific recommendations, and those are ones that we could actually make a decision, we won't have a formal vote on this today, but we could get a sense of whether or not there's a willingness to go ahead and actually draft some language that would accomplish some of the changes that were recommended by the committee. And those are probably the two ways that I would segment this. I don't know any way to do this other than to go through them individually, unfortunately.
I think it's probably the easiest way.
Yeah.
So we just start at the beginning.
Yeah, the first issue was qualifications of the mayor and town commissioners. Right now, we have to have no less than two sitting commissioners who qualifies residents of the town to actually have a town council. The other three positions can be non-residents. There was a question about whether or not, well, first of all, can, it can result in some kind of automatic results for a particular candidate. If you have an election where there's only one resident candidate and one open resident council position, then you really have an automatic appointment. That's not terribly different than having, you know, three open positions and only three candidates, and you don't need an election at that point either. So I, I don't know if there's, the committee declined to make any recommendation on that. If there is interest in pursuing this issue, the committee's recommendation is that we should have some sort of workshop and public comment, and maybe even decide if we want to have a change here to decide it via referendum. So I don't know if there are any comments, if there's any interest in pursuing this, or are we pretty happy with the way things are?
I have no issue with all of it.
Yeah, I now just make the comment that I brought this up as an initial point because, you know, things have changed since we, you know, we became a town in 1981. We have the ability of Zoom, we have the ability of virtual meeting and want to make sure that it didn't cause an unintended consequence by not having enough people in town. But it hasn't been an issue so far. We've got two residential commissioners and we can bring it, we can, if we do go to a workshop, we can include that as, as a lineup.
Right. Okay. The second issue is, there is some duplicative language in Section 8 and Section 22 of the charter. This deals with the process and requirements for the annual budget. Committee's recommendation is that we remove the duplicative language in Section 8 in favor of the language of Section 22. So that's a, you know, concrete recommendation as we go forward if there's interest in doing so. Makes sense.
I have interest in doing so, we'll add that to the agenda for the march potentially as a.
It'll take a little drafting, I think, to do that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm willing to do that, but just, it will take a little bit of time. There's a second part of this too, and that is to discuss the role of the town commissioners in approving the budget. And this also has to do with tracking the compliance with the budget throughout the year. And what are we really holding the town manager to? Is it a single overall budget number, or are we holding into individual figures within, within the town budget? That's something that's open for discussion. The committee did not make a recommendation to the commissioners on this issue, but it is something that we may want to consider pursuing and have a specific agenda item to talk about what the options might be.
Again, I think it's, it's probably good to go to a workshop.
The, the next issue is Section 10, manner of holding elections, voter registration, voter qualifications. This is about the potential to open up the possibility for members of an LLC, LLP or corporation to have a voting position in town elections. It's a pretty controversial issue, it was in Rehoboth when they considered it a few years ago. The consensus from the committee is that if we wanted to pursue it, it would also require a public workshop and likely a public referendum. You know, I don't know if there's interest in doing this or not.
So, you know, one of the things, just for the general public to understand, is that again, when we incorporated and the charter was written, LLCs didn't exist. They didn't come into, into an actual legal module until the late 80s, early 90s. Up until then, you just had corporations, trusts and individuals. And while our code allows trusts, it does not allow a corporation or an LLC. There's a, there are people in town who have, who rent their place out, it's easy enough to do, have put their, their property into an LLC to protect themselves from liability and also to basically run through their expenses through. So I do think that should also be something on a workshop discussed. It wasn't, not, again, the unintended consequences of a business then voting is a little bit different than if your rental property is in the LLC and you're voting. That's why I was kind of limited to how many people in the LLC could actually vote.
All right, the next one is Section 16, responsibilities of the town manager. Paragraph F in that section has a whole list of things that the town manager is responsible for, the sewer system, wire system, street lighting, streets, gutters, curbs, sidewalks, board blocks, et cetera. Does not have parking administration as part of that list. So the question was, should we add that to the list of responsibilities? The committee's judgment on that was that, yes, we should add that to the list. And again, that's a concrete recommendation.
Yeah, I agree. So we'll add that to the, to a future agenda.
Okay. Next section, Section 17, audit committee auditors. There was a situation last year where we had our contracted audit firm actually had one or two years left on their contract. But they did not choose to work with us any longer, surprising for such nice people, at least the town staff were. So the question was.
Who's the lien attached to the audit committee?
I don't know. Some guy. Does the audit committee, does the audit committee need explicit authority to release the audit firm from a multi-year contract? contract as was necessary recently? And the judgment of the committee was that they agreed unanimously that the town manager should have the ability to terminate an auditor's contract with concurrence of the audit committee. So we could add language to that.
Okay.
Again, a specific recommendation. The next one, again, this is brought up by recent history as well. When we hired our current police chief, we're all very happy with, and so is the Cape Cod Zetas with that chance to read today. Congratulations on that. It was a well-reserved editorial today. She came from another organization and was unable, not surprisingly, to immediately meet the qualification of having satisfied the Delaware Council on Police Training requirements. And so the issue here is she amended this to clarify the hiring of a candidate pending completion of training. And again, the unanimous recommendation from the committee is that we should modify the charter to allow any candidate for police chief who is not certified by the Delaware Council on Police Training at the time the offer of employment is extended. He'd grant a reasonable amount of time to complete any required training. Any candidate who does not have the required certifications would be required to complete the training as a condition of their employment. So any objections or problems with that?
No, not at all.
The current language in the charter with respect to captain of the Beach Patrol says that the captain of the Beach Patrol may serve under an employment contract. It does not require an employment contract. And the recommendation from the committee is that a contract is appropriate for the Beach Patrol captain and that the charter should be amended to include a contract requirement.
Very good. Okay.
Yep, agree. Alderman and assistant alderman. This has to do with the penalties that can be assessed. Right now, the limit on a penalty that could be assessed by the alderman is $1,000. We had, in the past year, almost just exactly a year ago, we made some amendments to our tree ordinance, which we intended to discourage any inappropriate removal of trees to try to preserve the tree cover here within town. And we increased the penalty to $3,000. And it can also be greater than that. If someone doesn't comply within a specific period of time to pay that penalty, that penalty could increase by another $3,000 and continue to increase from there. The question that arises, though, is since that's greater than the current penalty maximum of $1,000 that the alderman can levy, do we need to increase that? And the recommendation from the committee is, yes, it should be increased. The question I have about that, and this is directed to the town attorney, is we still have that language in there about increasing the level of the penalty. Even if we increase the alderman penalty to $3,000, would that affect our ability to increase the penalty for someone who does not comply with the tree ordinance?
That's not the question I thought you were going to ask. I've got the correct answer to a different question.
Well, I'll say that one, yeah. I may have, I may have wanted the answer, but I didn't ask that and just forgot to.
Well, we currently have an ordinance that sets a penalty for tree removal. You're questioning whether that ordinance would need to be revised if we grant the alderman the ability to, or the jurisdiction to impose a stiffer penalty?
No. My question, first of all, is are tree ordinance in conflict with the alderman's limitation of a $1,000 penalty? Is there really a conflict there?
Well, I don't think there has to be a conflict. It's possible that that language could be worded in such a way that the maximum penalty can be levied every day or every week or something that the violation is allowed to continue. So I'd have to look at the provision, which I could do.
Well, I think clearly the committee's interest is that we do as much as we can to discourage the inappropriate removal of trees. And if a tree is removed, then there's a requirement that that tree be replaced. And there's a penalty associated with that if you don't replace the tree. So I would like to, I'm sure the committee would be comfortable with doing whatever we need to do to be able to have the existing penalties that we already have with respect to tree removal and perhaps even increase those, but do whatever is necessary so that it doesn't conflict with any provision here with respect to the alderman and the size of the penalty that could be levied by the alderman.
We may be restricted to in terms of what authority we can give the alderman. That alderman statute, the provisions relating to the alderman that are in our charter were imposed upon us and other municipalities. So we'll have to give that some thought and get an answer on that.
Now, is the alderman imposing the penalty or is the town imposing the penalty?
The town imposes the penalty, but if you are cited with a violation, you have the right to resort to the jurisdiction of the alderman for determination. And the alderman is limited by our charter to imposing a penalty of no more than $1,000. So that's, that's much. So that loophole? Well, I mean, really, we can't impose, that was a roundabout way of saying, we can't impose a penalty greater than what the alderman's authority is to enforce. Which, based upon what Gary's saying, is that the penalty, the violation penalty is currently 173-6. 173 is $1,000, but if it's not paid within 60 days, it goes up to $3,000. And if I, the issue is, is I wait for the 60 day, and if I don't do it, then I'll have to go to the alderman, and the alderman can penalize me more than $1,000. So there's no, there's no teeth in that. Well, we could massage that a little bit, probably, so that the penalty is no more than $1,000, but it gets imposed again and again over a period of time, which I think might be compliant with the limit and still get you exactly the same penalty and impose the same deterrence as it would otherwise.
So can we ask you to draft something?
Yes.
Which would be appropriate?
Got it. Fred, we're going to keep you busy.
Then moving on to Section 23, enumeration of powers. There are two sections, Section 23 and also Section 26, that deal with the amount of indebtedness that the town can assume. And the recommendation here is that we remove any redundant language in Section 23 in favor of the language in Section 26. And just with respect to Section 26, there is a later question that asks about whether or not the borrowing limit of $3 million is sufficient. And the committee declined to take a position on that because we don't know the full cost of the town hall. And so, you know, the idea is that once we have more information about that, that we could go back to Charter and Code for another recommendation. The section one, there's another issue within Section 23. And that is Paragraph 16, and I think 7 is in 16, is the section of the charter that allows us to levy the accommodations tax. And then Section 17 is the section that allows us to levy the lodging tax on hotels. The thought here was that no matter what public processes we have to go through, public hearings and votes by the town council, maybe even referendums, if we wanted to change either the accommodations tax or the lodging tax, there's still, because it's in the charter, there's still an additional step of going through the state legislature in order to make that change. So the thought was, could we move this into the town code so that we wouldn't, we would at least be able to avoid that step of going through the state legislature? The committee actually did not take a recommendation on that, but I think there's a question that I would raise, again, with our council. I'm going to try to find my note on that. There is Title 22 in the state code is a section that governs all of the powers of municipalities. And the final chapter of that is Chapter 20, which talks about limitation of municipal taxing powers. And it said, limitation, every municipal corporation in the state, regardless of population, shall only have the power to impose levy or assess or collect the tax of any kind whatsoever as expressly authorized in its municipal charter or this title. The Title 22 does not allow us to do either of those taxes. So we are specifically authorized in the municipal's charter. So by my reading of this, we would not be able to move these sections. So my question to you is, is that correct reading of our limitation here?
Well, the typical scenario would be that your authority to impose the tax would appear in the charter and your code section would be where you would actually assess the tax. So the tax, so the maximum authority you have is expressed in the charter and the code section is where you actually impose the tax at whatever level the council teams appropriate.
So it sounds like you're saying we could leave in the charter the authority to impose, for example, on accommodations tax. But in terms of how much that tax would be, we could put that in. And that could be true for the lodging tax as well?
Absolutely. But there would be a maximum in the charter. Right. And you would still have to go through a referendum when looking, for example, at the accommodation tax. And the goal there was to keep the charter as the guidelines as to how the town runs and let the specifics get the code.
Right. Like, it would have to be a maximum for both of those, for both accommodations and transfer? I mean, not transfer, but lodging?
Your authority to assess is in the charter, and there's going to be, there needs to be a maximum there. I don't think you can get, you couldn't probably get the legislature to approve a taxing authority without a maximum to begin with. And then you can't pass an ordinance that violates your charter. It's void. So you've got to stay within those boundaries.
Okay.
But you don't have to tax the maximum that you're permitted to under your charter.
Okay.
Fred, to your knowledge, do the other, for example, Rehoboth have similar language in terms of the accommodation tax within their charter? I think that they probably, I don't have any direct knowledge of that, but I would be shocked if they were charging an accommodations tax just on the strength of an ordinance that they passed. I think that's, first of all, since we had gross receipts tax discussion, the legislature passed a bill saying no new taxes unless they're specifically authorized in your charter. The gross receipts tax was new to us. When it was being discussed, it was, no ordinance ever came out, but there was a considerable amount of discussion, which resulted in that amendment to the state code. So when it comes to taxes, it's, you know, critically important that any tax you impose through an ordinance can be linked to your authorization expressed in the charter or in Title 22, as you pointed out.
One final issue, prohibition on gambling. Question was, does this permit, does our current code, our current charter permit sales of national lottery tickets or the meeting? Right now, the current charter prohibits purchasing lottery tickets within the town limits unless they're state or nonprofit sponsored. I'm not sure, is there interest in trying to expand this in some way to make sure that we're covering the sale of federal lottery or other state lottery?
I personally don't want to feel like having to drive out to the Valero station to get my mega $300, $300 million, mega millions. It's a lot easier just going to Dewey Laker store and getting them.
So this is all about you?
It is all about me. This is the only thing about me, because I don't feel like driving out to get the lottery tickets.
I agree. And I remember when a law or an ordinance got passed. The idea was Hyde was going to have gambling, and it was going to be casino, and there was a lot of other things it was going to be, too. But, yeah, but buying your lottery tickets, sports betting, and like, hey, if you want to bet on a football game, I mean, I don't know why we'd want to prohibit you guys. Those are state-run things, so.
I'm just trying to get, all I want is mega millions. Impairable.
There you go. I'm sure the exiled will love selling them.
All right, so we have two paths here. One is that for those that were recommendations to move forward, change, we're going to put those into code, into amendments for the next meeting. And then maybe, Gary, around you, the scheduling, the workshop?
Yeah.
So that we can go through some of these other elements.
Yep.
Good job. So on that gambling, I mean, our charter is state law, but state law is routinely adopted or enacted by the legislature, as we know. So any latter enacted statute which authorizes the sale of these lottery tickets and base, you know, betting on college football games or professional football games, whatever is permitted, that might supersede this language. I think this language is designed to do exactly what you pointed out, and that's to say, you know, we're not going to have card games and roulette wheels in Dewey Beach. I don't know that we could enforce this against our version of Valero selling those lottery tickets. We'll address it in the workshop.
All right.
It wasn't that bad. All right.
Not that dry.
Not that dry. We ended up with gambling. Ten, discuss a possible vote to amend the previously adopted ordinance 828 to clarify the dates and times in which dogs are permitted on the beach. Nice job on that, Gary.
Yeah, our language was somewhat imprecise when we did this. And I think, in fact, it said Saturday, we really meant Sunday. It's my understanding that the expanded period, that the total period during which dogs would be respected, restricted on the beach, they're always respected, should read something like, beginning the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend through the Sunday following Labor Day weekend. Is that fair?
Yes.
And I propose that we make that change.
Is it through the Sunday following Labor Day weekend or the Saturday following Labor Day weekend?
It was Sunday.
Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah, it was Sunday.
Sunday, yes.
To a whole weekend as well.
I agree. That cleans it up a lot.
So that's a motion?
That's a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Should be the Sunday following? Or it'll be Sunday?
All right. Number 11, discuss a possible vote to request the Planning and zoning commission to consider an increase in the town freeboard requirements as recommended by the Climate Change Committee.
No, go ahead if you have some comments.
No, I just said, I know that I had a conversation with our building official, Ms. Hinks, who has her perspective on this, and I believe she's up there. She is.
Good evening.
So Dawn, can I give, could I ask you for just a brief overview of the issue and your recommendation and/or your thoughts on this?
In looking at the requirements of freeboard, freeboard is a higher standard over and above what the base flood elevation or the minimum requirement that FEMA sets, that a potential of 1% each year that that area could be flooded by a weather event. And so freeboard goes above that, that the town or municipality sets as an additional measure of safety. And so with what research I started on the other day, I did realize or find documentation that by law FEMA has got to look at each municipality or locality area and report back to Congress every five years as to whether they are or not going to change the base flood elevation for municipalities, localities, areas throughout the country. So we currently have a higher standard of one foot of freeboard additional safety over and above all base flood elevations throughout the town. And the town has, is approximately 70 to 75% in a special flood hazard area. So that freeboard does affect them. So FEMA... So, FEMA will be looking at our base flood every five years to determine whether it needs to be elevated, increased, or not.
So, to make that a little more, maybe a little more practical, when we started talking about the design for the new town hall, the town hall is in a base flood elevation level of five feet. So, that's the 1% probability flood level that could be achieved in any given year. The actual land itself is probably about two, maybe three feet-
Three.
Above sea level. So, we decided, we voted last June to require that the first finished floor of the new town hall should not be below base flood elevation plus three feet. So, that's the reason we're talking about three feet today, we made that decision. That's two feet above our current standard of only one foot. I think it's a pretty good assumption that base flood elevations are only going to go up from here out with all the climate change scenarios that have come from most of the people who think very clearly about this, I think. We did, in our 2018 Town Comprehensive Plan, have a recommendation that we consider an increase in the freeboard. Increasing the freeboard is one of the number-one recommendations that come out of all of the organizations like the Resilient and Sustainable Communities League, which has a number of municipalities as members, includes Center for England Bays, and a number of other organizations that are interested in climate change and how to mitigate the effects of flooding. And, you know, just while it's, if you think about this for somebody who's going to build a new home in a flood area, you think about a 30-year mortgage, there may be only 1% chance in any given year that you're going to experience a flood at that level, but if you think about that over a 30-year period, there's a much higher chance. It's more like about 25% to 26% chance of having a flood at that elevation. So, this provides some additional level of protection so that you get the structure up high enough so that you have some protection for many years to come. So, the charge here is to refer this, hopefully, to Planning and Zoning for further consideration. They would hold public hearings, they would make recommendations, they'd send it back to us, we would hold public hearings and make recommendations, or actually implement or not implement this change in the freeboard.
Any questions, council? Again, this is to refer to Planning and Zoning for them to evaluate.
That's discretionary on your part. No, I don't think you have to refer it to Planning Commission in order to act on it.
Just, well, it's quite clear to my mind, let's say FEMA says, comes up with four feet, and we do three feet on ours, does that add seven foot, then?
Yeah.
Yes, it's seven feet.
So, a 35-foot house would now be a 42-foot house, or we tell them to take their tough four off?
It would not be, well, 35's not the limit-
Right.
-in flood hazard areas. It's, the limit is 32 feet from base flood elevation plus freeboard. So, if you start at seven, you've got 32 feet to go from there.
Right.
There are some, there's some language that I still think is confusing in our flood mitigation section of our code, Section 101, and some degree in our zoning section, Section 185, where if you have an existing property and you want to elevate the property, the language is not entirely clear about what you can do, and you could run into a situation of where you might exceed the height limit, you might have to go to the Board of Adjustment for variance there. But I think some of that could get cleared up, and I want to bring that back to the Charter and Code Review Committee, at least to get them to give us a sense of what, how things should be. What do we think people should be able to do? And then, we can write the code that will allow people to do that.
And I just think, you know, my opinion, anyhow, for fairness, I mean, if you have a three-story house today, you're going to have a three-story house no matter what. We don't want to be taking anything away from what people have now, but on the other side of it, if we want to mitigate the flooding issues, we've got to make our streets a little bit higher, makes people's yards flood, backyards, all that kind of good stuff. So, I think if we do it, we do it universally, and, you know, but moving forward, at some point, we have to come up with, if we keep it at one, and we keep, you know, we make it free, we're going to have something, so. Yeah, but, I mean, Planning and Zoning is where it belongs, I think.
Yeah, so I heard two things. One thing is, I do think it's a good idea to, from a Charter and Code, to dive in deeper to make sure that we can get rid of any ambiguities that could exist in the language. I think that's a good idea, that we should move forward on. The second thing is that I have heard both sides of this coin and this argument, and I don't think we're at a point that we'd want to take a vote on it. I'd prefer to send this to Planning and Zoning, and then to do a deeper dive with Ms. Hinks to understand what her concerns are, as well as something more relevant.
Well, and Dawn and I talked yesterday, and I didn't have any sense of real disagreement with her position or her thinking, so I think we're consistent there.
Okay. With that, could I have a motion to send this to Planning and Zoning?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Number 12, discuss a possible vote to appoint new members and a chairperson to the Climate Change Committee. Great, you know, thanks to everyone who has come forward to, again, volunteer and help out. The list, a lot of people are in that committee.
Yes, there are. But that gives us a better chance to meet core mathematically.
Okay.
Mathematically. That's the operative term.
I think the only other, the odd thing that Gary and I did talk about is the potential that this is, Stacey Haddas, oh, she's on the bottom again, and that possibility of having these people represent the committee and all of them be voting.
Yeah, I, this was kind of a numbers thing. I got a last-minute email yesterday that somebody wanted to continue on the committee I'd not expected, and so I was, had included a, actually, a student as a non-voting member. I was really interested in having a younger perspective, somebody who has a much longer timeframe than mine for worrying about climate change issues. So, I think that could be very useful. So, the only change I would make here is that all of these 11 people would be voting members. We do have a new chair, Deborah Goldenberg, has agreed to chair the committee for us. So, I'm looking forward to getting things going, and getting meetings scheduled, and getting this group going.
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Comments, section number 13, Commissioner Bauer.
I think we covered it today, but, once again, I want to thank Patrice and Alex for their hard work in putting the Dewey and Bloom together in the Budget Committee. I think they did an excellent job as well, putting together a budget, and Sheena, making it look pretty, and keeping all the numbers straight, and giving us good data to make good decisions on, so.
Whoever thought Dewey's focus was being pretty?
I know. Got to put lipstick on this, man.
Commissioner Gibbons?
I would ask for folks to get involved with the Investment Committee.
Okay. You're going to need a chair.
Need a chair.
Karen.
And, you know, having enough people means I can have a forum.
And mathematically.
Mathematically. And the Investment Committee needs to speak good with math, just saying.
Commissioner Jazinski.
Sorry, I don't have any comments, thank you.
Commissioner Pressinger?
No comments.
I would just like to echo, I mean, every year that we go through this budget process, it just seems to get a little bit easier, so good job, Town Hall, and their presentation and moving things forward. We, you know, we had a nice write-up this past month in the Gazette, which showed how much this town, this council, the committees have done, and was able to wrestle it out of the Cape's hands, present that to our town manager as a gift for all the hard work.
Thank you.
The only last two things I just wanted to say is, you know, I do read the Gazette on a regular basis, and so when I see our residents who may have been, may have passed, I just want to, just note that Shirley Grokowski was one of our long-term residents, passed away in December, and most recently, Bill Hanson on January 26th passed away, so keep their families in prayers. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Who had an hour?